Call this meeting of the Del Rapids City Council to order and welcome all of those attending the meeting here this evening and welcome to those who are watching via the web. A reminder, if you use the city's website, cityofdelrapids.org, you can pull up the agenda for tonight's meeting and you can look at all the attachments and all the materials that the council people will be using tonight during the meeting. So you'll know exactly what we're talking about if you have that much interest in doing that. And we appreciate your interest in city government. Finance officer, please call or roll.
Hawk, Chris.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Borcher.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Ron Songen.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Early.
Here.
This coming Thursday is the June 6th and it is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And D-Day took place on about 50 miles of shoreline of Normandy in five different beach locations. There were 156,000 troops from the United States, then Kingdom Canada, France, Norway, and other allied nations. There were 6,000 ships and landing craft involved, 50,000 vehicles, 11,000 planes. There were over 12,000 total killed, wounded, missing, or captured. So it's the 75th anniversary this Thursday and when we salute, do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, it's a reminder that the flag reminds us of the men and women who have sacrificed so that we can be free. So, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Bob to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Bill to approve the last minutes of the last regular meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there was one thing I noticed in the count on those two resolutions where the names are, you've got my name in there as voting. And so I, which didn't happen, we realized, so, so, small, small item, so.
You're gonna have to ask IT about that.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, with the, there's been a motion of a second with that one little change note identified. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Visit is to be heard. I don't believe we have any visitors here tonight to be heard. Everything, everybody here is on the agenda, so. Next item is a public hearing for Coride Street Dance.
This is a, a, it's a special one-day liquor license associated with the Coride Street Dance that's going to be held on June 22nd on Forest Street. The event is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. However, Norbees will have the, will be distributing, selling the alcohol. So this is a one-day permit that allows them to sell that beyond the scope of their premise out on the street for Coride.
Interday motion. Moved by James to approve the special event liquor license for Coride Street Dance.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next is a special event liquor license, Cootie Days fundraising.
So this, this specific event is to be held on the Saturday of Cootie Days, June 8th, in the city park, east of the center street in the park there. They're planning a kickball tournament and a, what do you, feedbag toss tournament. And they were going to have a stand that sold beer. And the intent, it is the volunteer organization that got together and helped with the flooding organization of the volunteers during the flood. Their intent is to raise funds to help restore the ballparks in the community. North, the, the one-day special event license would be under, would be under Norbees. They've agreed to do that. I did have a call from Norbees today. There is a possibility that this event would be canceled for this Saturday for lack of interest, lack of teams signing up, that kind of a thing. But I would recommend that the council approve the one-day.
I have something to add. I'm not sure if you got the message. I apologize. But she also did ask of potentially moving it to the ballfield south of the river because it is less wet there and if that would be okay as well, which is technically, I guess, still city property in the park. And I also want to add too, it says that the fee was $150. I apologize, it is $50. She paid me a total of $150 and bags it up with the one in there, so.
Do we know the hours of operation on this? It's just in the afternoon.
During daylight.
Yeah, noon to 6:00 or something like that.
Then how are they gonna do as far as crowd control minors? And are they fencing this in or what are they?
This wouldn't be fenced in.
The park down there. Any purchases will be carded.
The people actually selling the beer.
Would be Norbees.
Norbees people.
Yes.
That raises high level of confidence.
If they end up not having this event, are they still going to be allowed to sell?
I would say no, this is attached to that. They wouldn't have the event if they, or they, they wouldn't sell alcohol if there wasn't.
So then if they cancel it, they get their money back, right?
No, because we published the, the public hearing. So that'll cover those costs, administration and public interest.
No refunds.
Yeah, no refunds.
So if they wanted again, they'd have to re-apply.
Correct.
It's just beer?
It's just mall.
Right.
Moved by James to approve an outdoor event permit. Correct. To move to approve the one-day liquor license or malt beverage license for the event. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. Are there any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Who said nay?
I didn't.
The, okay. Next item in their old business is outdoor event permit for Cootie Days and Justin will update the council on where that's at.
Are the Highway 115.
Oh, excuse me, I skipped it over. Yeah.
No.
No?
No. I thought it was Cootie Days first.
Under old business? Under old business? See, the, the agenda and what's on here don't, are flipped. Yeah, we've got, we've got the, yes.
Okay. What I'm going to do is the record, the, this doesn't need to be a decision of the city council this evening. The, when this issue arose last week, when the, when the Dixie River was out of its banks pretty substantially, there was discussion amongst the Legion and the city that looking at an alternate location for, for Cootie Days. It's the 100th anniversary of Cootie Days. But fortunately, the river has subsided over the, over the weekend, so the, the park should be suitable for hosting this event in the park this weekend. So there should be no action by the council at the meeting this evening.
So, moving on to the Highway 115 project, pay request number four.
Attachment package is pay request number four. This is to the main contractor on the Highway 115 project, the city portion of the project, T and R Contracting. This is for the, the work that's been performed since this, this spring. The majority of it's the installation of utilities up that north ditch line, north of the intersection. That's been done by their subcontractor H and W. Obviously, weather has, has kind of played a role in, in that project moving a little bit slower than expected this summer, this spring so far. They are moving ahead. Most of the, I think all the underground is installed with the exception of one manhole that needs to be installed on 30th Street. The concrete work is complete. Within the, within the context of this, there's still additional rec trail that has to be installed. The second lift of asphalt on Sunset Avenue still needs to be complete. That's gonna happen this week and, because H and W is in town doing some other city work already. So majority of this project is now complete. There's retainage left on the, on the pay requests is, is about all that's left for pay requests on the project. Trent Bruce is here to answer any questions of the, of any specifics on this from the council.
Why do we call it 115 when it's actually Highway 77?
The title of the, it's just inclu, it's inclusive of the Highway 115 project because this is the same contractor that was awarded the bid on the Highway 115 project is the, is the contractor of this project.
This name to me.
Well, there was, we, we did utilities within Highway 115 as well.
I understand that.
Trent, anything you'd like to add?
No, obviously, weather's impacted it. Their completion date is June 15th initially. I'm guessing that they'll get an extension. DOT won't give them an extension until it gets a little bit closer to the dates to complete it. But our estimation is they've got about four to six weeks left of work. Rec trail is probably the biggest thing. They got some grading and miscellaneous curb work. There is a little bit of punch list work. There's a piece of cover that's gotta be replaced that we determined to be in poor condition. So a little bit of here and there, but the next six weeks, they should be pretty close to wrapped up on the project as a whole.
The cleanup on the island is underneath that umbrella as well, right? The 115 project. But that's the bridge people who are responsible for that or?
Well, ultimately, T and R is responsible for everything. I mean, there's a lot of cleanup on the project yet. So yes, ultimately, they'll be responsible for everything. And then they'll, they'll be out amongst their subcontractors who's responsible for the island and the other pieces of it, so.
It's gotten better, that's for sure. Yeah. Any questions of Trent?
Yeah, brought to my attention that there was a tree that had been transplanted from the Veterans Park site when that was improved and that got jerked out during cleanup and had one citizen that was pretty upset about it, but, because it was about a $150 tree and it didn't look like a very good reason for that tree to be knocked over and pulled out. Just wondering if there's any recourse on that. If contractors are responsible for replacing it or?
If it was in the right of way? No. But I guess that's the first I've heard of that, Mike. Was it in the right of way or?
Kind of was planted there just a year, well, yeah, two years ago when the Veterans Park was approved, so it shouldn't have been put in the right of way, but I mean, I, I don't know for sure, but I didn't think it would be in the right of way. I wouldn't think it would have been put in the right of way. Because it was moved, you know, the spade, you know, from Veterans Park. But, it's brought to my attention another item.
Any other questions? If not, will I entertain a motion?
Moved to approve pay request number four.
Moved by Chad, we pay, authorized payment of pay request number four to T and R. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next, under new business, we have with us tonight Sheriff Mike Milstead and Captain, it's Captain, right, Walsh?
Yes.
And Deputy.
Apparently Fedder.
Fedder. And Sheriff is here tonight to visit with us. We certainly appreciate the long relationship that we have had with the Sheriff's Department and, and they're providing law enforcement in Del Rapids. We appreciate the fact of the resource, the resource officer that's at our schools and the good work that is done there. I think if one glances through the police report log that shows up in the newspaper, does kind of give you a feeling for some of the things that go on, from the mundane to domestic violence to suspicious people and, and so, so there's stuff going on and we appreciate the job that they do, the work and the dedication of law enforcement officers. They help make Del Rapids a safer community and we appreciate the work they do. So Sheriff, you're here to educate us. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'd start by thinking back my history as sheriff, 22 years, and then looking at Mayor Early and Councilman Chris. I know both of you were part, you know, of the government that decided back in 1990, 29 years ago this month to, to transition away from having a local municipal police department and contract with the sheriff's office. I think probably all of the reasons that you showed to do that are still valid. It was, I think, the right thing to do for this community. I'm honored, that didn't happen when I was a sheriff, but I, I, you know, I recall when you had a police department and they, you know, hardworking, loyal people as well. But in Del Rapids, we've got a unique relationship and it's grown, it's becoming more popular across the country, contractor services in a variety of size departments, but Del Rapids was one of our first and, and, you know, we now provide contract services for all the rural communities. Brandon has his own police department in Sioux Falls, but the rest of them we serve as their, as their police department as well as the sheriff's office. That's a unique challenge. Each city has its own needs. They might have a problem in Humboldt that they'd like us to address with a certain traffic enforcement. On the other hand, Hartford might have a curfew issue that they want to deal with. Another one might have parks that have been vandalized. And so we try to model our patrols and gear them towards what you want, because I am a firm believer in government closest to the people and you are, are that. And the fact that we don't interact with council members on a regular basis, or Mayor Early and I don't talk a lot, is because you have great city staff. We work with them regularly, Justin, and we're on the phone a lot when we have contract issues. We work with your city staff. When you have a council, somebody in the council bring to city staff a, a problem or concern, we get one call and either Captain Walsh, my patrol commander, or Captain Bosman, who oversees a lot of our, our contracts and our budgets, certainly relate that. And we, we try to keep our officers here familiar faces. It's not always possible because, you know, every, every position is about, really about five and a half officers to fill a 24-hour slot. And with days off and holidays and vacations and military leave and sick leave and FMLA, a lot of times, you know, you can't always be perfect, but my goal is to try to have regularly assigned officers that you get to know. And I've done that with our school resource officer program. I think you all know Deputy Walker. I don't charge for the school resource officers in your community. I just, when I was, when I became sheriff in 1997, it was a program that Sioux Falls PD had that I was really enthused about and I saw great value in, and so we started the SRO program and then expanded it countywide into, and Del Rapids as one of the recipient. So, you know, just real quickly, a couple of things that you get is, you don't have to worry when you're about, when your officer's on vacation or when your officer's on military leave or FMLA, because your officers are here basically round the clock other than shift change. I don't tell you, I don't bill you for, for officers appearing in court. I don't bill you when my SWAT team comes out. I don't bill you when my detectives come up to follow up and interview people. Those are all things that we, we consider a service based on your contract. And if we're not here for a short period of time and we get a call, you know, we'll get right up here. The great advantage on not only your citizens in, in Del Rapids, but also for that outline areas, and the reason why we charge you roughly 75% of our cost, is because if I didn't have a deputy in the city of Del Rapids, I'd need one up in this area anyway to respond to rural areas. And, and so that's, that's a really important part of the relationship that we have. So some agencies bill the full amount, some of them do what we do and that's, we, we see a win-win between the county and the, and the city of Del Rapids. We try to reflect increases in our budgets annually and try to do that in anticipation of what your budget will be, and we're trying to do that every year instead of waiting six years and then coming and bumping it 10, 15%. So I think we're doing that better now. We're, we've done a couple of programs, they, you know, Councilman, you recall with the ambulance service, the difficulties that ambulances are having with EMTs and paramedic staff maintaining those people to be able to respond around the clock. I implemented a program several years ago where we, we encourage officers to become EMTs under Dr. Jeff Luther. He's a, provides medical oversight for our EMT program. The county commission pays up those deputies a dollar extra an hour. And so there's an, there's an additional cost for the deputies, but it's, it really helps put, you know, an EMT on the scene quicker to, until the advanced life support of paramedic level can get to the scene or other EMTs typically from the part of our home, which in some of our communities, in the middle of the day, on a weekday, it's really difficult to get those volunteers to get on the scene. And so the commission just allowed me to up that number, so we're just training up our, our next five deputies, so we'll have 20 EMTs in our patrol staff. And our EMTs are unfortunately, just like the city police, not that they're empty, EMT, but we're responding to more overdose, overdose calls, because in particular, some of the drugs that we're seeing in our community, whether it's meth, heroin, other opioids or synthetic drugs like fentanyl or carfentanil. The, the difference between a non-lethal dose and a lethal dose, for example, with, with carfentanil is, is less than a grain of, of, of salt. And so if they're off and what they inject, they, they literally pass, pass away right there. So far this year, I think we're at 10 overdose deaths in Minnetonka County, 39 overdose calls. 12 of those overdose calls, now this is between Sioux Falls and, and the county, 12 of the overdose calls, the officers, responding officers administered an antidote, Narcan, and it works if you're still alive. It's not always the case. Sometimes we get there too late or we get called too late, but I've literally watched Narcan bring two individuals from, from, from taking, drawing their last breath to being a love, I mean, awake, agitated and wanting to fight with the officers because we, you know, interrupted something that they had no idea they were gonna die from. But, and one of the things that we're really focusing on with our officers right now and we're enhancing it even more, is what do we do if we do bring somebody back with Narcan or on an overdose call? What's our next step? Because we haven't changed their behavior, we haven't changed their, their craving for that drug. And so we have what's called a Narcan Two or Narcan Plus program where we'll provide a packet to family members that says, here's where you can get help, here's where treatment options are, here's, here's how you could put, for instance, an involuntary commitment on your son or daughter, here's how you can get resources and numbers to call and support and treatment and all those things that we view as important. We give that packet to the family of people who survived the overdose, because they literally have never craved, for instance, heroin or an opioid more than when, when we bring them back from, from the death. And so, and we're not gonna be there the next day. So that's family and friends and support, and so it's just something unique, something new we're seeing in our area. Unfortunately, I have to report that the, the, the cost of drugs in our community has never been lower, which is a bad sign, and the availability has never been higher. And so with that, in our mobile community, those things impact the people of Del Rapids just like they impact the people of Sioux Falls and Hartford and Humboldt. I met with the sheriff and chiefs several months ago and the director of the Bureau of Justice Administration from the White House and the cops director from the White House came to South Dakota to listen to the police and, the police chiefs and sheriffs. Every one of them told the same thing. They said drugs are driving our crime, in particular, meth is driving our violent crime, it's driving our home burglaries, it's driving our property crimes, and anything that we can do to effectively, effectively address the meth problem and it is gonna impact, positively impact public safety. That being said, this county, this city, it's one of the best places to live and learn. We're gonna keep it that way and, and in great part because of the people who live here, that they're willing to call in suspicious activity or something unusual. And, and I think there's important efforts underway with the county and the city of Sioux Falls with the triage center to try to give people help early on. And since the county's invested in that, it would certainly be something that someone who's struggling in Del Rapids could go to our triage center and seek help for, for addiction, for the troubles that they're, because these drugs typically, it's the, the lifestyle will likely kill you if you're a meth addict. The drug itself will likely kill you if you're a heroin or, or fentanyl, if you're hooked on those drugs. So they don't invite me to talk to the Optimus Club very often. So I, I, you know, I, I don't always come to say, here's, you know, I, I love listening to Cootie Days, I love listening to the fact that you're, you know, that gats are a problem and I just realized that when I tried to talk to somebody on the phone outside. I know where there are city councils just trying to figure out how to, how to stay afloat. I know where there's city councils that are dealing with violent crime at an unbelievable pace when I look at the, what happened in Chicago over the weekend and think about the, the number of shootings and deaths that they're dealing with and trying to struggle. I think, I think that's a good reminder of why people move to Del Rapids and live in Del Rapids, why they move to Hartford or Humboldt, Sioux Falls. They, they like the Midwest, they like the values that you have. I love to hear the, the issues that you deal with and I know some of them are very important, they're extremely important to the people, it's their, you know, it's their life, but, but I, I do recognize the fact that there's a, there's a very important reason people live here and, and I repeat, you know, and I already said it once, but I'm gonna say it again, your city staff is just tremendous to work with. They just are. And Mayor, you've been here for a long time and some of the other members of the council is, this is probably, you know, I, I probably check my blood pressure, I should, the doctor says I should check my blood pressure. If I checked it right now, it's not very high, because I'm talking to the salt of the earth, this, this city, small town, city council. It's a great community, we're, you know, we're all dealing with issues in our community, mental health issues and, and safe schools and all those things, but we do it together and I'm, I'm proud to, to do what I do. I'm proud of what my deputies do in this community and, and with that, I think probably the only one other thing I wanted to mention is, this fall, we, the Office of Emergency Management was moved under the Office of Sheriff. So I now have a captain. Well, he was a captain, now he's the emergency manager, but Jason Gierman. And our intent is to be, you know, to be there for you dealing with emergency management issues. We were here for the flood. We work closely with your firefighters. My intent is to make sure that that office provides all the necessary services that, that you need. We have a rescue squad, a very dedicated volunteers, we have almost 50 police reserves that help us when we work special events like Cootie Days, the fair, things like that. But we're here for you and I, and I echo that with emergency management as well, that if there's anything that you need, I know with the flooding and doing surveys and damage and damage assessments and stuff, he's been very busy working with FEMA on some of that stuff. Unfortunately, a lot of it doesn't fall back to the homeowners that really helped them out, but I'm sure it will, you know, work towards what the governor's intent is for trying to get, you know, additional funds to South Dakota for the disaster that we've been going through. With that, Captain Walsh, I'll let you step up and then I'm hanging out here so that as, as you come up with questions, which I assume you'll have, I'll be happy to answer.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, Captain Walsh from the sheriff's office. What I gave Justin is a, just numerical list of the calls that we answered in 2018 in the city of Del Rapids. I'm not gonna bore you with statistics or numbers or anything like that. Please feel free to look through it. If, if there's something that you see in there that, that you have a question about, I'm happy to answer it. I don't think the call volume rose very much from the previous year and that's a, that's a good sign. We like to see that. We like to ensure that the deputies are out there doing very proactive and aggressive patrol and being very visible out there and I think that plays a very significant part. patrol and being very visible out there and I think that plays a very significant part in keeping some of the more, some of the crimes like disorderly conduct and drunken public and things like that, it keeps a lid on it, I think, before it becomes a problem. And so we're going to continue to do that. The deputies that we, that we assign up here, as the sheriff said, we try to assign the same people up here. They get to know everyone, they get to, we encourage them to get out and talk to as many people as they can and I think that also helps and that's been a philosophy of the Sheriff's Office ever since I've been here as well. And I would echo what the sheriff said, if there's anything that you need from me, Patrol Division or any other division of the Sheriff's Office, please feel free to get ahold of me. The mayor and Justin both know how very easily to get in contact with me. I'm also going to stick around, if you take a look at that and there's, and you have questions on it, please, I'll stick around until after the meeting and be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Sheriff, maybe a few words, comments on where things are at with the new jail and the impact and how that indirectly impacts our citizens when they see their property decks?
Yeah, we were actually really fortunate, our jail project is $48 million and it's a jail addition to add 320 additional beds and then replace the total, all of the public safety building jail operation so that 20 octagon shaped building will no longer have anything to do with the jail and then where you see them pull in with prisoners, won't be anything to do with the jail, that may be where emergency management ends up, I'm not sure, but, so everything will be in the new facility. Now that'll give us 720 beds capacity, I'm full right now, I have no federal prisoners other than I keep two or three, but I have no, I'm not contracting with other counties right now because I just don't have any room for them. We were actually sending prisoners to Charles Mix in Fall Creek County because we were overcrowded and I can't do that. So the project is $48 million. The fortunate thing about it was the county had some bonds coming due and the combination of everything, the cost to the homeowner was very, very low because of the other bonds that were expiring. I didn't bring the exact figure with me, but it's, it's, I, it's under $10 a month and I think it's way under that. So we were really fortunate with the timing of that. Now, because it's, because it's a bigger jail and we're going to be taking on additional prisoners, we have to hire additional staff. Now, let's just say one, as I kind of explained it, of 24-hour posts, but in our business, if I have an assignment, a post, that I have to have somebody work that post 24 hours a day, that's really 5.5 people, closer to saying 5.5 is a pretty good number. And so to just add three posts for us opening the jail, that's 18 people. So that's our increase, we're hiring six of those this year and in my budget hearing tomorrow, it'll be the additional 12. But the commission has known all along that this was coming, it was part of the process that we started in 2012 when we identified that the Community Corrections Center was a place you should not be housing prisoners anymore. And, and so it's taken that long, it's taken seven years to get the building where it is now. If you drive through into downtown, you're going to see our current jail, the four-story jail now has a second, there's actually two floors, but it goes up again and we're going to have, there'll be one open dorm area divided into fours, so it's four separate, 32-bed facility and we're going to get that open, we think, in August, which is really helpful because the day I can open that, then I can go to my partners in Lincoln County and say, I can take your 45 prisoners a day as partnership with Lincoln County and they pay us roughly just under $100 a day. So if you do the math, you know, that'll be, you know, there'll be some revenue early on that is going to help us. Now, the federal government would like me to take many more inmates, but right now, that's, our intent is not to take those for now, other than we might take, you know, 10 or 20. Right now, they could probably use 100 beds. When we then, a year from August, open up the rest of the facility, that'll be when we hit our 720, 20 beds. With the room, we're smart enough this time, like we were last time to add the footings that would support 300 additional beds, so that makes the downtown jail cap out at 1,000 beds. We built a kitchen to handle 1,000 inmates, so we're, we're good to go for 1,000 inmates. The next building project for that jail will be another sheriff and probably another county commission. I didn't think I was going to build two of them and I can remember I've been here long enough that that was necessarily necessary. It was interesting though that we built, we built the last jail, we went from our 166-bed facility to a 400-bed facility and the projection was that that would last us between 10 and 15 years and that's exactly what it did. And so people who do these projections use a lot of factors and we hired the same person that gave us our projections the last time to do this projection. And in the meantime, he's done a lot of other projections on a lot of other facilities in America and so we're pretty confident that this jail will get us through for, you know, 10 or 15 years. Now, we're going to guarantee Lincoln County for the next five years, they can have 45 beds a day and so they'll be, they'll be paying us that and not, you know, right now I think they're housing inmates in three different states and they have about 70 inmates. So they've got them probably in seven different jails, three different states. So imagine the windshield time of moving prisoners back and forth because they all have to come back to court in Lincoln County or Sioux Falls, so it's just, there's a lot of transportation expenses that they have. That presents sometimes a public safety risk and officer safety risk and escape risk and so if we can house them for them, it's a good partnership. In the meantime, Lincoln County is going to decide, you know, within the next few years, are they going to build their own or are they going to help us add on the other 300 beds sometime to give them what they need because of their numbers and obviously they're growing fast. But that's the partnership, it's going to have an impact on taxpayers, the county commission may need to opt out this year. I know that the demand for the state's attorney's office, the public defender and the public advocate continues to skyrocket, their caseloads are way off the charts from what normally a prosecutor or a defense attorney would have to provide good counsel for someone that has the right to good counsel. So I know that's an issue that will be coming to our commission over the next month or so from the different agencies and departments. My hires pretty much are, one, that we're looking for court security to add to the court security and then, and then just the officers we're talking about for the jail, the 12 additional, I'm not looking, not, we didn't put in for any more deputies right now. I would love to, but I understand the reality of it, I've got to go hire 12 people for the jail. It's not the year that I'm going to be able to go ahead and hire a bunch more officers from the field, much as I'd like to. So that's the, kind of the impact and the timing of the jail. Again, we should be in first of August upstairs and I actually went up there about a month ago and I thought the elevator was working, it's not, so I went up that little crickety side scaffolding to the fifth floor and so that was my stress test for the year. But, and then a year from now, a year from August or so, we'll be moved in, done with everything. We're all kind of, we're going to start some new programs to make it, you know, we want to give judges the option of putting somebody on community service instead of jail. So it's like they'll probably show up at eight in the morning and they go up, maybe come up here and pick up tables or help out in park or clean up the place, you know, sweep the streets, I don't care. But if I don't have to feed them and I don't have to house them at $100 a day and they're still a consequence for a crime they committed, we're going to look at some of those options as well. We've expanded our 24/7 program. I monitor right now today more people than I have in custody. Today we have over 600 people that we're monitoring out of custody. Either they have an electronic monitor on their, a GPS unit on their ankle or they have a spray alcohol detector on, or they're blowing in an interlock device, or they're coming in twice a day to the sheriff's office, blowing in a PVT to show us that they're sober, or they're on a drug patch, or we do 1,000 UAs, your analysis every month to try to keep people straight on the outside, keep them working, keep them paying their taxes and not being a burden of society. So we're pretty aggressive on those alternatives to incarceration. If not, I wouldn't need a much bigger jail.
The people, I hear we all people, well Sioux Falls and the crime and the increase in crime, but when you look at the numbers and then compare that historically to the increase in the population, is that increase out of whack with the increase in the population or is it what one would suspect would happen or?
Well, if you ask somebody that does those statistics, I think they probably would say it's close to just following the population increase, but I would, I'm not just a statistics person, I think that if you asked any police officer, deputy sheriff on the street, what they're dealing with compared to what they were five or 10 years ago, it's not comparable. I worry more about my deputy sheriffs and our officers than I ever have because of, in particular, the drug, the drug culture, the meth people. It's interesting if you look at the culture of these meth users, they're not alone, I mean, they're in a carload, there's three, four, five of them, they're armed, you're hearing about the shootouts, they'll get shots fired, called, they show up, they drive, there's bullet casing in the street, no one sticks around. Well, usually if you get shot at, you're going to stick around and call the cops. They don't because it was a drug rip. So now our drug users are buying guns, stolen guns usually out of these house burglaries and rural burglaries, they're buying guns to protect themselves from the guys that are ripping them off when they say they're coming to buy dope and instead they got a gun, they take their $200. Well, now they have a gun, so they have shootouts and once in a while they'll show up at the hospital, they hit each other, but that creates a danger. So Mayor, it's, the impact of, in particular, methamphetamine on the crime has been, it's scary, but the impact of heroin and opioids on families being devastated by overdoses and deaths is also a nightmare for those, for those family members that survive and none of these, you know, if you went to Del Rapids High and asked the graduating class, how many of you want to grow up to be junkies and die by heroin or what, nobody would raise their hand. These aren't people that intentionally said, hey, I want to, I want to get hooked and die in a corner of my parents' basement with a needle in my arm. But something, something drives them to the point that they start using it and it's availability and the people willing to push it and try to make a profit. That's what's killing some of our people. Last year, there's roughly 70,000 Americans that died of drug overdoses and these are drugs that, you know, kind of, our country is so different, we, we have 5% of the world's population, 5%, we use 95%. Wait, 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 95 or 99? We use 99% of the world's hydrochloro, 5% of the world's population, we use 99% of that hydrochloro and 80% of the opioids used in the world are used in the United States. So we have a, we have a drug issue in our society and it's impacting lives.
Any questions from the council? We appreciate, again, we appreciate the work that the sheriff's department does in our community and if there's anything that you can think of that we can possibly do to help get the message out that you want out in the community. I'm sure there's a lot of people who have, you know, they probably see the car drive by and that's as much as they know and, you know, and maybe that's fine for some people, whatever, but I guess I always try to, to, you know, if you have an issue, you know, call, that's why they're there and they're going to, and they're going to be. And I've had people tell me how, twice in the last three months, people, about how responsive the sheriff's department was and the way that the issues were dealt with and the way they were treated and so it says a lot about you guys, so.
I appreciate that, you know, we do surveys of people, we go out on calls, we do random surveys and I get to see the results and Captain Walsh reviews the results with the officers to say, you know, how did the 911 call, were you treated appropriately, how was the response time, how would the officer handle you? I mean, I mean, we want to make sure, you know, it's my name on the side of all the cars, it doesn't say Melstep, it's the sheriff and so I want to make sure, and it also reflects on our 250 members of the sheriff's office. Between the jail, they don't know if you work in a jail or civil process or detective, you're a deputy sheriff and we have great faith and we expect our officers to be professional. We have discussions and when they're sworn in about the constitution that they're adhered up old. And, you know, when I was studying to be a lieutenant on the PD in Sioux Falls, I remember my philosophy developed about community policing when I learned back then that said, community policing is really defined as someone, the things that you can do to show that you're part of a community and not apart from the community. And that's a, that's a, that's a message that I try to carry. I want our officers to be, you know, I'm proud of their coaches or they're active in their church or they're active in their, in their volunteer, as a scout leader or whatever it may be, but being part of the community and also when they're here, get out of the car, walk through, talk to the business owners, get to know the people, you know, and stop out to football games, walk through Cootie Days, you're not there to, you know, we're not trying to write every ticket that can be written. If there's a problem with a, with a truck route, you know, go talk to the owner of the company, they get a truck seat come through and then talk to a couple of drivers, say, no more, it's going to cost you a lot of money if you start coming through here, but the way, our approach would not be, let's just be a ticket factory, our approach would be, let's talk to the people that run this business, tell them the citizens don't want this, the lawsuit, you can't, give that, you know, the warm approach first and then, you know, we have plenty of tickets, I'm not going to run out of them, so we can always resort to that, but. And then the other thing is Mayor, and again, for all the members of the council, if you have something that you'd like an issue addressed or you have a question or one of your constituents comes up and would like to know more about something, you know my phone number, Justin always interacts with us and will be willing to listen.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here and we always look forward to your visit to Del Rapids.
Thank you.
And thank you, Captain Walsh.
Yes, sir.
Next item of business is the Sunset Drive Water Main.
Attached in the packets is the bid tabulation together by DGR for the Sunset Drive Water Main Replacement Project. The city received five bids for the project. The lowest bidder was H&amp;W Contracting in the amount of $217,602.10. This is over the engineer estimate of $205,800. DGR went and did an analysis, since H&amp;W is the same contractor that is in the south, that's the contractor for the Southeast project and the council had made the decision to pull out Sunset Drive in order to be able to potentially find some cost savings. When the analysis was done by DGR, it really ends up being a wash. The actual water main installation is more, is cheaper or was priced lower than the Southeast project, however, the asphalt costs were higher, therefore the total cost of the project was above the exact same as if we would have just done it with the Southeast project. So really, we're not seeing a dramatic cost savings. This is a project, the council remembers, that has, the council has been approached by members, residents of this street because of the poor quality of water. The city has seen issues with it and haven't found a resolvable solution, flushing hydrants doesn't seem to work. It's just of that age and that corrosion level when flushing the hydrant isn't seeming to take care of the cleanliness of the water. So with that said, Trent is here to answer any questions, but would recommend the council approve awarding the bid to H&amp;W for the, for the Sunset, Sunset Drive Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $217,602.10. Any questions for myself or Trent?
And just to be, you know, clear that the monies paid for this work come out of the water fund.
Coming out of the water fund.
Correct. Are there any questions? Trent or? Trent or?
I'm visiting Trent.
Oh, we covered it. We were hopeful to get some savings, but it didn't happen. It's just a competitive bid environment. We've seen it all across.
One question. Since that's getting paid, then it's gonna get torn back up again?
No, that was stuffed out beyond there, Bob.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yep. This project will take out from there.
Oh, okay.
The, you know, if you look at the other bidders, there wasn't anyone really even close to that, so.
Yeah, compared to the other bidders, it's a cheap deal. Big difference.
What are they hoping to get this done?
Well, there is a deadline on this project for the end of this year. I think it's the end of October for the little line over itself. So the pressure is on H&amp;W to do this project along with our other projects.
Their bid, they did not bid the options which were extended to next year.
We did have an alternate, ad alternate that would allow for the contractor to put a cost savings in if we allowed them to do it into June of next year. And they did not opt for that in their bid. And actually, none of the other bidders really threw in that much on that alternate. There was, I guess, there was one at $15,000 and one at $12,000. But nobody really bid on that as an option, you know. That's how we ended up with the water tower project was getting a really competitive price on the best quality paint was offering that as an option. But I think everyone is just so tied up with work that there's not any enticement with that as an option this year.
If there are no other questions, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $217,602.10 bid for H&amp;W Sunset.
Motion by Bob to award the contract for Sunset to H&amp;W at the stated amount. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by James. Further questions? Hearing, not all of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Next is Resolution 2019-11 Hazard Mitigation Grant Application.
Resolution number 2019-11, really all the resolution does is give authorization to myself to be able to submit and sign the grant for this hazard mitigation program. The attached documents really tell the story of the application document, map, and then some of the other FEMA documents that have to be signed in order to submit this application. But this Hazard Mitigation Grant application goes back to discussions that we had last budget, or last year around the same time when we're discussing budget. The FEMA has done an analysis of the community. They used a rain on grid approach to their analysis and it's brought into, it brought in some neighborhoods into consideration when FEMA is going to be adopting the new flood plain map. So the intent of this study is to request assistance from FEMA to further analyze mainly that eastern drainage area from 15th Street and everything that comes in north of 15th Street into the retention pond that is off of 12th Street that flows through down to Brown Park and then Brown Park flowing down through the rock channel ditch. It goes underground and then exposes again at the rock channel ditch and makes its way down into the river from there. So this studies that drainage basin and everything else that comes into that drainage basin in the area. So what this would do, it would be a 75%, 25% grant. So we're looking at around $56,000 in engineering fees and the city would commit $14,000 towards this study. So we look at this drainage basin, it would, it will assist the city with, the end result of the engineering analysis would be data that is adoptable by FEMA to prove what the actual flood risks are in this area. It will also give the city additional data to maybe guide ourselves and guide decisions in the future. You know, we've had discussion, it's been on the capital improvement plan and been discussed, you know, the rock drainage ditch and that kind of older infrastructure that flows through the city. If the city was ever to attempt any improvements with that, it would provide data and help with the design of that in the future. So there's kind of a two-pronged approach to this study. You know, it isn't guaranteed that we're gonna receive these funds. We have been discussing this with the state officials, with emergency management. So there's potential, but it isn't guaranteed that we'd receive funds for this study. So what we are committing to tonight is the 25% city funding and support of applying for the grant.
How does that process work out time-wise as far, when do we submit the app and when do we find out?
We would submit the app, it's ready to go, and I'm not sure in the timeline when we would find out. I don't know what that is. I'm guessing it wouldn't be too far in advance.
How long would the study take?
It'll probably take about six months total to get the data put together and then reported. And part of that's because a lot of people that we would have doing the study are busy doing construction work right now too. But probably about six months from now, we would look at that and be able to provide you a summary of your system.
Any questions? I will point out, time-wise, you know, Minnehaha County has been pushed back on the, kind of, FEMA's priority list for adoption across the state. I know City of Sioux Falls is going through some of these further analysis as well. So Minnehaha County has kind of been pushed back further when it comes to adopting the new flood plain maps. So this, we do have a little bit of a window of time, time-wise. We did budget $30,000 in this year's budget, we'll point that out, for anticipating that we'd be looking at doing some type of drainage analysis with this FEMA flood map stuff.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Bill to approve Resolution 2019-11 Hazard Mitigation Grant. That could be hard to say. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by James. Are there any other questions? Resolution, so finance office, so please call roll.
Chris?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Orchard?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Rob Salkin?
Yes.
Byer?
Yep.
Resolution 2019-11 has passed. It's now time to pay the bills. Claims payable. So moved.
I did put six more in front of you just so you all make sure you see that. Their month end was on Friday, so I didn't quite get all of them that I needed. One of you got all six of them. I don't know what it was.
There's a motion by Bob that the city pays bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Any questions? If they're signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion is carried. Administrator, Finance Offices report.
Not much here. The, you'll see the request by Paul Roman, Napa Auto Parts. The council had discussed that last meeting, that issue was tabled. And Paul Roman has rescinded his request to occupy the right of way to put the air conditioning unit. He's found a location. There's that little bump out of that little building next to the loading dock that he's gonna figure out a way to put it on there. Capital Improvement Plan meeting, we talked about that last meeting. And this is a reminder to the council, we're gonna meet at 5:30 prior to the next council to have a discussion on capital improvement plan. I'll send out a reminder prior to, and we'll be sending out a packet of information that includes the future capital improvements that we have as of today.
That material will be supplied independent of the system?
Yeah, probably, yeah, it'll be independent of the system because that's not in here. So I'll send out a paper packet.
Yep.
Yeah, if there is projects that the council has that they would like to see included for consideration, please email, call, and try to work through those. Make sure those are included in for discussion purposes. Swimming lessons registration, that's every, such an important issue. But we went with the online registration and it was a success. We didn't have to have people standing in line for three to four hours. We did have a little glitch with the system. It was supposed to go live at midnight and it was set up that way and for some reason didn't. But thank goodness, our pool manager was online at midnight and realized that there was some Facebook comments trickling out there. She got online and figured out how to get it live. So we appreciate that. She really saved our hides because we would've been hearing about that today still. But we did have 230 registrations that took place in that first day that that was available. So it seemed like it was a success and went smoothly and we'll be looking at that for the future. I'm also really looking at that, the same system strongly for our campground online registration as well.
It appeared that everybody was happy they got the kid into their rent class.
Yeah, we had some.
There were probably, there was a handful of people that needed some stuff switched and just playing around the system, I was able to move things and make it work.
So they had to wait till midnight to sign?
Well, it went live at midnight on that.
It was 12:15 by the time Sarah fixed it, so it really wasn't that long.
That was, they have a, that's the way they go live is they go live at?
To be honest, I thought it was kind of nice because I didn't want the system to crash with everybody trying to sign up at 5 o'clock at night, you know? So there were some people that waited till 7 o'clock in the morning.
In the morning, yeah. It's just for those people that really want to get that specific swimming lessons time, it's gonna be worth it for them to stay up.
But they're not all staying up till midnight?
I set my alarm to get up, I'll just say that.
It's not like ordering concert tickets where?
Well, I mean, but, see, we would, they would line up at the swimming pool, they'd set launchers up at noon or in the morning. It was like waiting for an iPhone coming out or whatever. So this was nice though because that day, of course, was not nice. It was not a nice day that day and that's always the way it ends up being. So this is all done from your phone or sitting at home on the couch, so it worked out well. Southeast project update, it sounds like the middle of June is, or middle of July is when H&amp;W is gonna be coming in on 7th Street. They really haven't given us a firm date yet. But there was the beginning of tree removal since our last council meeting. And it's pretty obvious if you drive down any of those streets. They've been here again this week doing some of the more difficult trees around power lines and the, all of the stumps are going to be ground out. They're not being pulled out of the ground, they're being ground out. And they will be, you know, somewhat filled back in, areas that were disturbed will somewhat be filled back in. They're not gonna put people's lawns in the perfect order because it's just gonna get torn up again next year on the streets south of 7th Street. You know, there was, obviously, you know, we tried to communicate really well with folks, but there was obviously some folks that didn't, you know, even realize that there was any trees removed. And so I know, I was unfortunately out of town when they started doing that and I know Clarence and City Hall worked with a lot of folks through some of their issues. So we've been trying to accommodate requests where people want to save trees, you know, working with Trent and Lance and Riley. There's a lot of circumstances when it's just not possible because of the amount of work that's gonna have to get done around those trees. It's just not possible. So what we couldn't save, and they're interfering with the project, it's just been necessary to have them cut down, unfortunately. And we, you know, we've been trying to accommodate some requests here and there that are possible though. You know, a lot of them were ash trees, but there was also not ash trees in the zone. So other than that, does the council have any questions on that? Has council got any feedback on tree removal at all at this point?
Do appreciate the work director being right on interfacing with the people down there. I think he helped out immensely and just being able to talk to people down there.
And Riley from DGR, because we used to have to load calls his way.
Do you know what the plan is for the alleys?
Yeah, they gotta come through and there's trees that have to be removed in the alleys.
Have they marked all those?
Um, not all. Not all.
Then I was asking about this.
And I talked with, I think, one of your neighbors here this last week. There's a fairly large tree that has to go and it's, this is too close to the sewer line, that's gonna be installed, it can't stay. So. Final thing, the, or two final things. There's an elected officials workshop hosted by municipal league. I put the agenda and registration in there out in peer if any of the council members are interested. Talk with Claire and we can accommodate that request. Also too, the new water bills hit mailboxes today and there's, you know, the increases are noticeable. We did have quite a few calls today. We anticipate we're gonna be getting those throughout the week. So if council gets approached, you know, have them call City Hall, we can explain. There is a link on the website to a short explanation of why the rates are increased and what the rate increase was as well. There wasn't enough line on the new water bill to put an explanation in there, so we hope folks to visit the website.
How did most people accept the explanation?
Understanding, but that, you know, we have to do projects, but there's, you know, I think when it's the surcharge, you know, it's two different surcharges. So the higher increase is on those using less water. So the minimum bills jumped, you know, that percentage higher than if you're using 5,000 gallons. You know, we kind of said it's a 10% for water and around 14% for sewer. That's at 5,000 gallons. If it's, if you're using 600 gallons a month, that's a higher increase. So I think that those folks that use less water. The other kind of confusing thing for the bills this month, at the same time, we're implementing the sewer average as well at the same bill. So people's bills were kind of hinky. Actually, some people's went, are lower than they normally would because the sewer average is kicking in. And that's the January through, or no, six-month average of your sewer use. That's, yeah.
Or June.
June, yeah, that's, that goes through the summer months. And that is for folks that are watering lawns, that you're not being billed sewer for that percentage.
Until you know when watered their lawn last month.
Something wrong if you were watering a lawn? Anyway, no, well, that's, yeah, that's it. And, yeah, I think the information on the website looks pretty good too, so. Just a few items that we, I think we still have scheduled for next week on the 11th, one of well-marked, healthy city home meetings, right?
Yeah, let me verify that.
That's the last, the last I have a date for that.
I think you're right, but I'm not sure if they're gonna be meeting. I'll check.
Last Thursday, the Del's, the Area Transportation Study Advisory Team, we met down at the Department of Transportation down on, you know, the building down there on 38th Street to be briefed by a contractor on where things are at and the work they've done so far. And it seems like things are moving along. The thing that impressed me, they did, if you had noticed, they had set up some traffic count. traffic count tubes and then they had cameras mounted on stop signs and that, so they actually had to validate the types of vehicles and the traffic count trucks, et cetera, and all that. And they really interested me, Tenth Street east of Clark was sixteen hundred and fifty-six average daily and west of Clark, it was eighteen sixty. So there's a lot of people coming up Clark and making a right-hand turn to go on west. But you have someone, anything you want to add to that?
No, I just emphasize again, I've been really happy with the contractor or the engineering firm we selected on that. They they have really good expertise at this. I think at the end of the day, the report's going to be really well. There is going to be, I didn't include that in the packets, there's going to be a public meeting Wednesday, June, is it the twenty?
Twenty.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty-sixth, the evening of the twenty-sixth from five thirty to like seven thirty-eight at the middle school. And that the purpose of that meeting is to attempt to get the public there to, you know, they've got a series of questions and kind of that they try to get information out of the public to include into the into the study. There's also going to be an online survey that's going to be going out around that same time and we're going to be trying to get distribute some information around quarry days, the folks to try and get them to the to this public meeting as well.
And the pavement, the sort of pavement assessment as part of this that has been done in there?
Yeah, the pavement analysis, they've done that on the Pazer technique and they're in the process of putting together that kind of street by street, grade of each street. They did kind of have a breakdown percentage-wise of where we're at for grade A, you know, grade one through Nine Street, you know? The whole world of pavement management is something I'm not completely up to speed on. It is a whole scientific practice and the the gentleman that we have on our committee, Shannon Schultz, is the is the is the deputy at the at the county engineering department, county highway department, and he's really well-versed in that. So we're going to be leaning on him to help us kind of interpret some of that data that we get. You know, the new parts of town, the streets are in relatively good shape. The new concrete we've laid is in is in good shape. You get to the kind of core areas of town, the as we already know, that the asphalt is not in the in the greatest shape, so.
There's always a discussion about when you talk about standards and federal standards and these standards and then, you know, what what does this mean here and what's it mean over there and 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 at least it it clarified some of that for us. And I think the other thing too is there's a meet they're going to on the twenty-fifth, we'll be meeting with the community stakeholders.
Stakeholders, yeah, giving them a consultant, a list of businesses, individuals in the community that they're going to sit down and have a discussion with to try and get ideas and thoughts and feelings and all that kind of stuff. One other thing, mentioning that having the county gentleman involved, we've had quite a bit of discussion on that section of Old Seventy-seven north of Fifteenth Street section that's out of city limits and, you know, you know, it'd be kind of interesting to see how this unfolds and see what the consultant maybe brings forward as some recommendations. But I think it's good, we're having a good, healthy discussion with the county about that, you know, about that section of asphalt, you know? So Tom was talking about the classifications, the classifications of your roads tie into federal funding and the county gets federal funding. We aren't eligible for federal funding because we're not a class one community, but that those rules aren't written in stone, so we're there's it's just kind of interesting. I'm I'm educating myself quite a bit about 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 a lot of this stuff through this process.
We're eligible as a pass-through, but the county does not typically.
Typically.
Give that money.
Give that money out.
To cities.
In a conversation about that, at least the word no is not mentioned. So we've opened that up for a good discussion, which is which is good and because they're you know, it's certainly a maintenance liability that we that we presently have. And so anyway, that was good and and hopefully these meetings with the public and the stakeholders were good. It's a it's a good process, so.
Yeah, it is a good process.
Last thing I have is I had mentioned to you, I had all those second graders come to City Hall and they came through here and they learned about what all you people at this table do. We explained that and then they got to work on a little problem and solve issues, et cetera, and and it was a lot of fun. But the one group, as they're walking out the door over here and saying goodbye and one one little fellow stops and looks up at me and he says, "Say, I got to tell you something." You do? "Well, you need to buy new chairs." And if you look at the chairs in the back row, and I said, "Okay, I know who you should go visit." But I didn't, you see? I didn't draw. But you know, seriously, these little these these second graders are are, you know, when I was in the second grade, I didn't know as much as they do. My God, they they and they had a fun time here and and they love sitting here and going like that. So anyway, that's all I have. Appreciate contributions here tonight and we're moving ahead. Thanks again to Captain Walsh and Sheriff's Department for being here. Do appreciate your being here. It's a it's a good thing, so.
So moved.
I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
It was asked of me as far as when do you think Clarence and the boys will be out spraying mosquitoes, bugs, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, so that's been a common question since those little black mats hatched last week, but so the spray that we have in the sprayer we have doesn't work on those black mats. That's an important piece of information to spread if anybody's asking you. That's all that would be, we have to recalibrate the sprayer and get a different type of product. But they, yeah, they only lasted two weeks, so. But then but we are going to spray this week, weather permitting, for for cootie days, the nuisance mosquitoes. Because the Helix Tarsalis or the West Nile mosquitoes generally aren't here until, you know, July timeframe, July into August is when they they come around. So these would be nuisance mosquitoes we're spraying for. It wouldn't really be for for West Nile.
They're all nuisance.
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The loan, does that close down on the fifteen?
Yes, that was closed.
Okay.
We are good to go.
So are interaction with CCOG when they're going to process anything that comes in?
Yep.
That it's going to typically come from the project to you?
Yep, yep.
Do you want to, what time of the month are they going to handle those for?
Well, probably once we get established on this, well, we really haven't had a pre-con with the contractor, but we'll establish we're either doing it at the first or second meeting and we kind of stick to that. So we we try to do it at the end of the month, process it and then pay it first. First meeting. First meeting, but if your first meeting is the second of the month, it's a little bit difficult, so.
Right, this this would be, this would take a while to do the SRA, that's what I'm talking about, the SRA, so they ask all of you guys.
Right.
To CCOG, CCOG to the state.
That's what it'll be.
Yeah.
It also will take a little longer, but I just wanted to know the timeframe because we've got one.
Got one, okay.
We can use as a game pick, just a simple one.
All right, whatever you send to me, just like copy Lance and copy Claire and copy Leslie, Mastroianni has CCOG. And then we'll we'll go we'll go from there, but yeah, just call and we can walk through that.
I'll listen.
Okay, yeah, and then I can forward.
I would guess the first pay request is going to be that September timeframe by the time it gets through that process.
Yeah.
August.
July, August.
Yep, and September would be about the time that the money would kicked kicked in, so then you're.
Yeah, typically about a month and a half through that whole process.
Yep.
So.
Good. Okay.
Since we talked about, since we're talking about roads, has anybody been east of town on the Jasper Road? Is that hole, like somebody said there was a hole at that first bridge and small but really open up underneath.
Water went underneath the road.
There's a sinkhole up there.
East side of the east ridge.
Bridge, yep.
You know, and it washed it out. I mean, it was.
I guess some bikers were coming up and it was a small hole and they got off to look and it was a sinkhole completely caved in like eight feet.
Water had run, you know, on the east side of the ridge and washed out the.
Has the highway department been out there and?
Oh, yeah.
Been working on it?
I'm out there today, but I don't know. It doesn't look like it needs fixing. Me, pump full of concrete. Might be a.
The right people need to know about it and know about it.
Okay.
I didn't get any updates on that today yet, but I I was working on it.
It sounded like it was a potential train wreck waiting to happen.
Yes, it was.
With all those trucks coming, it's that thing that looked like a mess.
If there are no other questions, Bob has made a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second for that elegant motion? Seconded by Bill. All favor, signify by saying aye. Voted nay, motion carried. Thanks again, people. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.